We have a forum, we'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:20 I guess is close to any. Paula Best and everybody, we have a good number of people on vacation, we have one board member late, we have two other board members working on some other board business at the same time. I guess the first item on the agenda would be the pledge relations. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Brackegrimm, Seth Second, Aaron Krakow. Are there any amendments? Bernie?
Under the second session.
Yes.
The real estate.
Yes.
Just don't need it, okay, all right.
Yeah, I would, I think there are some negotiations, updates to be added on that. Let me just ask Keith and Kathy, Patrick is showing up, he will be late, that will give us a forum at some point. Is your time better served outside of this meeting right now? Okay, okay, well I guess I, then we do have a forum without you, so I was gonna try to move the boarding items up. I guess I would ask either one of you, are there any items that you would like brought forward in the agenda? Okay. I guess that's Asia, for the finance committee report Keith.
Basically, the minutes are pretty clear, but I want to just make sure there's, people have any questions from the minutes. We hired our accounting company, and we met with the accountant, and one of the things that's gonna be very positive for our school district is that they will be giving us a report before our budget gets finalized, and also they will be giving us ideas on where we could do some much better fiscal management. I think that's a positive, that's something that I have never experienced before. We are experiencing a budget deficit of a little bit over 1%, and I think that our fiscal software, our better fiscal management software that we have will give us a better idea of how to manage our budget. And the fiscal, the director of, the director of finance is going around and talking to all of the various people in each of the buildings who are really working with that system, so that they really have a better idea, sort of making them more accountable, and also so that they have a better idea of the numbers and the spending. And I have confidence that once they know what their spending and where it's going, that we'll have a lot more, a better management at the local building models.
Okay, I will try to record some more of that under the finance, I'll just leave everything else as is.
Oh, you didn't want to record?
No, that's okay, we've got a couple comments, but yeah. Also, I'll be able to, I think I can probably speak to some of that.
Okay.
Then, under, under the board, well actually what I do need to add is a committee report for the planning committee, which I would like to put at members, I guess make it put right after the approval of the consent agenda before finance committee, because that's the point at which I will talk about the work that we did at the planning committee, the one I had in there will be to talk about the budget building process for fiscal 2015. So that is one amendment to the agenda.
So can you just say again?
Yes, I'd like to put planning committee, planning committee as a report just between consent agenda and the finance committee. Any other amendments on the agenda? All in favor of the agenda with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. At this point is the time at which we encourage and ask for public comment, all members of the public, it could be staff, students, are welcome to speak at this time. We did not have a sign up, but if you, you know, just a small number of you, please just come forward, give us your name, and by typical protocol, you have three minutes, although I think we can be a little more flexible tonight, or it doesn't go too long.
My name is Frank, I'm a history teacher at Burlington High School.
What do you need me to do? I can move closer? There, is that better?
I'm still Fran Brock, I'm still a teacher of Burlington High School, history department. I just wanted to let folks know, I think I emailed you, Mr. Halliday, there are three of us from the history department that were in Turkey this summer, different programs. One teacher was there as part of the world council, she was chosen to be part of a group of four Vermont teachers who went, it was Terry Buener, was part of the National World Council, I think it was about a two-week trip through Turkey. Ron McNeil went, sort of on his own, having taken a course in Turkish history at UVM, and then he created his own trip for the summer. And then I was there for three weeks as part of a National Endowment for the Humanities teacher seminar program. That was actually, the program was developed by primary source, and I think primary source has done some work with, I think, one of our elementary schools in the past. And so there were two professors from the Washington area, and then there was a group of 30 teachers from across the country, primarily history teachers from middle and high school. And we traveled, we followed the Ottoman Empire, its rise and fall, and trekked around to the various capitals of the Ottoman Empire. It was fascinating, it was fabulous, I don't think we missed going into any mosque. What a mosque, yeah. But it was just wonderful, and at some point if the curriculum committee is interested, we will be incorporating what we've learned this summer on our treks through Turkey into the curriculum, certainly for the 10th and 11th grades, and so we'd be happy to talk to the curriculum committee if at some point they'd be interested to know how we're applying that professional development to the high school world history curriculum.
Chris?
Good evening, my name's Barbara Hedrick, Word six resident. I'm here to discuss two topics. One is the conversations we had, I think, three months ago about restoring the 15% to athletics and co-curriculars. And at that point, my impression was that we would receive monthly updates from Jeanne Collins on ideas she has on how to restore that 15%. But those updates are being needed at the finance committee meetings and not here at the board meetings. But I certainly thought, because we had hundreds of parents here at a board meeting, full board meeting, that we would get an update before the school year started. That was the whole purpose of having monthly updates, is that before the school year started, we would know what progress she has made, and I, I'm sorry to have to say this, but it's disappointing that no ideas have been offered yet, she hasn't had any ideas on how to restore the 15%, and that's very disappointing. So, everybody's hoping that big progress is made over the next month. I guess she'll give an update in August 27th, the first day of school. And the update to the board, full board, really won't be made public until after school starts, and that's just timing is late and it's disappointing. Topic number two is about honors courses. I've heard through the parent network that the Partnership for Change group and the school board are talking about eliminating honors courses starting for not this school year, but for the next school year. And that's really a wrong concept to even give serious thought to. After all, we want to create scholars, and why would you want to eliminate honors courses for ninth and 10th graders? So, as you're developing the budget for this coming year, be sure to include money for honors courses for all classes through high school. When I heard this, it reminded me of an experience I had at Edmunds, my son, a number of years ago. I was told by the principal who has since retired, that although it wasn't policy, the school was thinking that they would not assign homework, as much homework, in order to close the gap between kids that get support at home and those that don't. So basically, the idea was, well, we won't help the kids who have the support at home, so maybe academic gap won't be so bad. I just think that's ridiculous, I couldn't believe he told us that. And that's what this reminds me of, is getting rid of honorary courses for ninth and 10th graders. You're not helping every child, as you say, reach their potential if you eliminate honors courses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Scott Sweeney, and I kind of like Barbara, I'm here to talk briefly about the co-curriculars and athletics. I understand I probably can't ask questions, you know, because it's public comment time, and I'm not all that seasoned with the entire process, if I just kind of started getting involved a few months ago. I will be very seasoned, I would think, after the next year, but, you know, it's been a little surprising to me how there hasn't been, you know, I came to that big finance meeting, very powerful meeting, then the next school org meeting, and it seemed to me that the 15% budget cut athletics and co-curriculars was quote-unquote revoked. I understand that it's gotta be placed somewhere. I haven't heard anything, I did go to talk to Jeanne at the bagel that morning, and I know it's a tough position to be in, but, you know, I, it's very, I'm very passionate about it, I have two kids that are gonna be going through the school system until they graduate, you know, at least that's what my plan is. And I believe in both co-curriculars and athletics, and I am actually meeting Helen Hennessy tomorrow to discuss some out-of-the-box things that maybe get involved with the boosters and fundraising, and I'll be a part of any way to build the funds for co-curriculars and athletics, any way I can. But I would like to, I guess, understand how to get the information on a more regular basis, be able to pull things up, and I, you know, Keith, right? Yeah, it's Keith. When he was talking about new system, I thought that's pretty exciting, you know, hopefully makes things a little bit easier for me to understand, you know, I'm sure it's not rocket science, but I, yeah, I'm missing something, I'm not quite sure what I'm missing, so, I don't know, kind of rambling on here, but I guess what I need to figure out is when to bring the entourage to what meeting, because I will make sure that that happens, and I know there's a lot of people that feel passionate about the athletics and co-curriculars, and I think that was well seen and heard during the finance committee meeting that I went to a few months ago, and also the board meeting after that, so. And like Barbara said, I guess my understanding was that the board meeting at this point in time was, or the topic of the co-curriculars and athletics at this board meeting at this time was so, parents, I'm not really in that situation, both my kids go to Flynn at this point, but for parents to be able to make a decision before the school year starts if they wanted to keep the kids in the school system. And that, I can assume is very, you know, disappointing, as she said to people, and, yeah, thank you.
I think that probably covers public comment, given that most everybody here has spoken. Thank you, and what I would say is, there are some things that came out of the discussion from athletics and co-curriculars that had led us to rework the budget process somewhat for the upcoming fiscal year, and it's something that we will be speaking a bit to. One of the keys is to get earlier public input than what has typically happened. Just wanted to add that as a small bit of reflection, I don't know if anybody else wanted to make any comment. Okay? It's not a time to really engage in kind of back and forth, but.
I guess that's what I was speaking of at one point, was the lack of public knowledge, like in December and January there.
Hey, and I think, what I guess I have to ask here, I can't really engage, but what I would like to say is that that's, the reason I made the point was maybe see, stick around a bit and hear some of the changes that we're talking about. Okay. Next item on the agenda is board report, I have a couple items that I'd like to talk about a bit. The first is, as I think, I hope everybody remembers, that Winuski has been asked by the State Department of Education to look into ways, I phrased it in the, on the agenda as the Winuski consolidation study. And the District of Burlington was asked by, also by the State Department of Education, to be part of the conversation, as Winuski is looking for options of what they can do. They have a new superintendent, and they are going through the second study in 10 years of a similar style. We have had one official meeting since that over the summer, and we had a second meeting that got postponed when the consultant who's working for the state was unable to make it. We will be meeting again in late August, so there'll be more of a report in September as to the kind of information that's coming out of it. There's also a certain amount of discussion to see if we might be able to have South Burlington also involved. I think the key that my, the people are looking at in particular are some form of shared services. I think it goes not nearly so far as consolidation, but shared services within, between Burlington and Winuski. And part of the reason I'm bringing this up, making it public, and reminding the board of it, is if anyone else on the board has any interest in this, I'm officially on the committee, but any other interest in being either part of the discussion or reviewing the information, please let me know. The other part is the real estate transactions. Since we've last met, once again, we did not go to city council with a package of negotiations, although it has already gone through the finance committee for the city council. The reason we're holding off on these negotiations is that there are, there has been some issue in, related to the Taft lease, and we're looking at these real estate transactions as a package, and until we have some issues in particular on risk within the task lease, Taft lease, more formalized, we have not been willing to go to city council. And so we've held back from that, and those have been the reasons. Additionally, Jeanne and the district put together some FAQs to answer some of the questions that have been arising during the entire process regarding all of the transactions. Those FAQs are now set up to be able to take to NPAs. I don't know how widely you circulated that.
I have, with your change today, they're ready, I'll email them out to everyone, we'll put them on our website, and we can make you copies if you wish to take any NPAs.
And, I don't know, does anyone else have any other comments related to board report? Aaron?
Is it time to share that letter?
Yeah.
I really apologize to this poor student, Mae Fairfax from Champlain Elementary, but my neighbor who works there had given this to me, that the student had written about more art time in school, so if it's okay, if I can read it. She said, "Dear Burlington School Board, I'm writing this letter because in my opinion, Champlain School students need more art time. I believe this because art teaches us to let our imaginations fly a bit. It teaches us to use our creativity. I feel these are very important skills to have in life. I also think art can change you. It lets us become more open to a lot of new things. It inspires us to look at things from different angles that we never thought about before. Also, in my opinion, art allows us to express our feelings and thoughts without words in a way people may or may not understand. Either way, everyone will have their own impression of things. You may say that art is just for fun and won't help us on your way in the world, but art gives us so many good things you can't even think of. So please think about this and consider us giving, and giving us more art. Thank you." And she's a third grade student, Mae Fairfax.
Okay, does that just match up with this?
Sure, yeah, and I'm happy to respond to her in a later note, but it was written in April, so I'm a little behind.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess at this point then, Jeanne Superintendent's report.
Okay. The staff investigation that has been underway regarding our policies and procedures in light of a teacher-student relationship is still ongoing. We did receive a draft report around the beginning of August, and Alan, myself, Susan Gilfillan, the attorney, and Jim Cronin, the investigator, met one more time around August 8th to ask for some clarification on a couple of areas in the report. So the report is not yet final, so we can't yet give you the report itself, but it's very close to being final. In fact, I would think we'd have it within, within the next week or so. And so we'll be, we'll be sharing more information as it becomes wider. Just a quick update on what's happening in the world of diversity and equity. We have been interviewing, or the committee has been interviewing, I believe, I don't know, three?
I'm just kind of sorry.
Okay.
Maybe it's still.
I thought he was queuing me, I'm kidding, what am I, am I or am I not supposed to say? So we have an interview in candidates for the Diversity Director of Engagement and Education, and I believe I'm anticipating two or three finalists being sent to me within the next week. And if all goes well, we could well have a position in place very shortly after the start of the school year, around the start of the school year. Parents for Change is actually holding a meeting in this week, tomorrow night. It's the meeting that's supposed to be held in June and couldn't be held, and so it's been postponed, so we're actually a couple months off, but it's the meeting where we're going to update our commitments from last year. All the progress that's been made, particularly talked through the report card changes that have been made for Parents for Change and the other different areas. So, that meeting is happening tomorrow night, unfortunately I have to be both at that meeting and aboard one NPA, so I'll start at one, go to the other, go back, so. But there will be plenty of other people representing our district administration there. And then the third thing under diversity equity update is that our conversations for equity in the schools this year are, a subcommittee of our Equity Council worked with Audrey Sparks and Daniel Barron to create protocols and conversations for those to take place in a more intentional format this year. What happened last year, you may recall, was the first half of the year was very well planned and well intended, and the second half of the year with the loss of Art Director, kind of, was not as well planned. Conversations took place, but not with the same consistency or intentionality. And so we have mapped out the entire year, even before this new person's on board, we can't, you know, we don't want to lose time as they're getting up to speed, so I'm very excited about that. Back to school dates for principals, it's tomorrow. We're spending the next three days at the, at down here at Rock Point School, who is coming to share their space with us, preparing for our strategic initiatives of the year, and continuing our work on collaborative leadership and around diversity and equity. Teachers return, new teachers return on August 20th, and for our one-day-in-service focus entirely on diversity, equity, and our English language learner students. All teachers return on August 23rd with an assembly here, if any of you would like to attend, at 8:30, coffee at 8 o'clock here in the morning. Aaron, if you want to come to ours instead of yours, you're welcome to. I get to stand up there with this in front of about 1,200 people and not explain why it's on. Hopefully not fall off the stage, pretend I didn't say that. But I'm very excited about, about the opening convocation. This is the third year that we've been doing it, and it's, it does take time out of the school building, but people really enjoy getting together and seeing each other and building a community, and we're really focusing on building a respectful and accepting community within the Burlington School, so this will be a huge kickoff for it. Students return for the most part on August 28th, I say for the most part because the middle school and high school do something called Smart Start, where the sixth grade and the ninth grade return, and some seventh, eighth graders, and some 10th through 12th graders return to help them on that day, and then the full schools return on the 29th. And so rather than lay it out right now, parents should be checking their school's webpages, they're getting letters in the mail this week from schools, and all of that will be laid out for them. I do need to remind everybody that the first day of school is a Wednesday, and we are doing the Wednesday early release for PLCs, professional learning communities, starting the very first day. We have contracted with Mountain Transit for the return home on Wednesdays, and we cannot go back and forth. I mean, CCTA sets their schedule, and they can't adjust for one day. So the very first day of school will be an early release day. And we will be sending out not only the parent newsletters, but also alert now phone calls, and we've translated those phone calls, so we can make sure that parents know. Our after-school program will start on Wednesday, August 28th, so if you are enrolled in the after-school program, you just stay on through, and it starts that very first day. I'd like to recognize the, each year when our New England, our NECAF scores, the New England Common Assessment Program assessment scores come out. We always struggle to help people understand how difficult it is for a population that is not only high in poverty, but also receives non-English speaking students throughout the year who need to take these tests, how difficult it is to meet the benchmark, and yet how proud we are of our students for making more than a year's growth, even if they're not meeting a particular benchmark, and the complication of explaining that to people. So I was really pleased this year to note that we were recognized by the Agency of Education for an increase of 10% or more in reading or math, adequate yearly progress, for one or more student subgroups, particularly subgroups around race and English language learners. In Burlington High School, Edmunds Middle School, Champlain Elementary School, Smith Elementary School, Integrated Arts Academy, and the Sustainability Academy. I think that's, that's something that we need to stop and be proud of. While the goal is that every student will reach 100% proficiency by 2014, the reality is what we need to do is make sure that every one of our students is making adequate progress. And by adequate progress, that's at least a year's growth on an annual basis. And what this recognition tells us is that we are doing enough, even though we are meeting the benchmark of nearly 100%. Partnership for Change update, there has been some activity over the summer. 20 participants, I think I mentioned last month, were at Eagle Rock School in Colorado, and they returned, 20 participants between Winuski and Burlington, and they came back with some action steps to help implement the graduate expectations over the next year. Liz, I'll give you this. Liz, I'll give you this. The VHS History of the Champlain Valley Food System Summer School Course was a huge success. Finishing up six weeks of a COAT class, participants made final presentations and cooked a meal to share with friends and family on July 26th at VHS. I think some of you received, all of you received an invitation, some of you were able to make it. Students receive graduation credit each week of the course, as well as learning the history of food and the current state of food in the Champlain Valley. July 29th to August 2nd, UVM course entitled Leading School Transformation was led, we have four fellows, the director, the project manager, and a teacher from each school take this course. One of the final projects was a presentation where the fellows introduced themselves, and we thought, this presentation is about 15 to 20 minutes, but it might be something worthwhile to do at the beginning of a future board meeting. That is your decision. How Colston, the Partnership for Change Director and Project Manager, Lindsay Cox, also spent a week at the International Democratic Education Conference, learning from people all over the world who are implementing student-centered learning methods last week, August 4th to 8th. Winuski is starting up an iLab, and that progress is happening at Winuski High School, and working closely with the teachers and one fellow as they implement this completely student-centered model through a lab process. About 15 Burlington High School teachers will be working August 19th to 20th. I'm planning a group this year that looks at the grade 10 to 12 structure. And just a reminder to please subscribe to the blog and the newsletter at www.partnershipvermont.org, and it'll help keep you up to speed. There is a first steering committee coming up on August 28th from 5:00 to 7:30 at the O'Brien Community Center, and a first implementation meeting coming up September 12th, 6:30 to 8 at Winuski High School. That was supposed to be brief. Couple other things, we have wrapped up our summer activities. The SOAR Summer School Program at Sustainability Academy this year was very successful, again, receiving reports from teachers and partners who participate, and parents and students. They say it's the best year ever. This is a program that is a full-day program for five weeks in the summer that incorporates both math and literacy, as well as enrichment activities, bringing in partners from all over the community, or in some cases going out to partners. The kids went sailing one day, but they didn't just go sailing. I mean, the Sailing Center came in and taught kids, and then they culminated an activity out on the Lake Sheldon Community, Sheldon Farm, Sheldon Village. There were a number of different partners. We also had a very robust summer program at Hunt Middle School for middle school students, at Smith Elementary School for students in special education who needed extended school year services, and here at Burlington High School, a large number of students participated in a youth transitions program, which included both academic component as well as a jobs component. There's been, there's starting to be a lot of buzz about what is being called School Calendar 2.0. This is the calendar that the Champlain Valley superintendents are proposing via change to the calendar, starting in 1415. There is a website, I don't have the with me right now, but it is built into my blog, if you'd like to go to it, or you can go to it off our website, that gives you information about the proposed calendar, what it might look like. There will be five public forums in late September, early October, and those dates will be advertised broadly very shortly, as soon as we confirm the locations. One will be here at Burlington High School, though, for community input. And one thing about, a couple points about the calendar. The calendar is the same number of days, just spread out differently. The summer is eight weeks long instead of 10 weeks long, and there are intentional breaks throughout the year for focused instruction. And if the calendar, the calendar would be voted on by the superintendents of Champlain Valley, and if approved, it has to be approved across the entire Champlain Valley, Chippin County. It's not a school-by-school decision. It would, that vote would take place in January 2014 to take effect in September 2014, or whenever after that it ever comes to vote, if it does. But that would be the earliest that it would come to vote. Bernie may know a little bit more than me on this one, but we did have a ceiling collapse in our on-top program. Did you know that? You mentioned that to me, Ricky.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We had a ceiling collapse in our on-top program in the kitchen this weekend. We're just testing it for asbestos before we repair it, but we anticipate it will be repaired before the start of school. Any questions? I'm gonna do that.
Ben?
I was not anywhere far. I was not on the ladder there. Coincidental.
No, I just wanted to add in on the, with the SOAR program. I don't know a lot of detail about it, but I've been getting some feedback about it, that people were really happy about it. So just share that feedback for the director and the staff. I thought it sounds like they've done a really nice job. And with the School Calendar 2.0, you know, just wanting to make sure that I understand whether decisions may or may not lie, but that I do think that, especially given, you know, the discussions with the early release, et cetera, that it's going to be a lot of concern out there, and hoping that the district's going to do more outreach than just, oh, we're going to have one public opportunity to discuss it. I guess I think there needs to be a lot of, people should at least be able to provide some input, but also just a lot of education about the decision, as in how it's being made and why. Because I think it's pretty significant.
It is significant.
The curriculum committee is going to be bringing this.
Just as a discussion point in our next meeting. So if others would like to come and voice, you know, to have a longer discussion around that, that would be certainly welcome. Next Tuesday. Thank you.
Also, I was asking, think the segment for a School Calendar 2, the number, dot blockspot.com. If anybody's looking for that. It was easy to find Calendar 2.0 Champlain Valley.
There are, I mean, there are, I was sampling today by a colleague outside of our school system, but like, there's a Facebook page that's out there, Save Our Summer, and I mean, I, yeah, so I mean, there are, people are starting to, there are a lot of questions and a lot of, a lot of concerns, so I think that it is something that, I know that we don't have a vote on it, but I think it's something, you know, that as a board, that we don't have a vote on it, but I think that it's something that certainly merits our close attention, because it's, we will all be hearing about it if we go through.
I absolutely agree, but I first brought it to the board back in February, the Curriculum Committee, and I think that, and I'm trying to keep you updated regularly through the superintendent reports.
Right.
And I think, I think that there should be a board discussion, if you like, even in the hearing, as well as, you know, the regional hearings. I'm sure that other boards throughout the region are also having the same discussions. Again, some of the information on the Save Our Summer page is incorrect, quite a bit, actually, and it is not at all a completed deal. It's, the superintendent's spent a year researching and talked to our after-school partners, and now the appropriate phase is to go out to the, is to the public long before the decision is made. All kinds of things could happen. It could, you know, also be put off for some time. So I, the more that you can help get the word out, the better. Today in the doctor's office, I clarified for South Burlington parent what it is and what it isn't. So.
Any other comments or questions related to the superintendent's report? Is there been a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Oh, may I?
Oh, wait, sorry.
Go ahead and take your motion. I just need to fill in the two blanks we can have. You have two blanks on your consent agenda.
I guess, yeah, but just put, put together.
Do you want to do that before a motion?
Yeah, what you, the two blanks are in the, in the...
Accounts payable and payables?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So they're major?
Yeah.
Accounts payable is $2 million, or if I say it easier, two comma, seven, eight, one comma, one, five, one, point, oh, eight, two million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, one fifty-one, and eight cents.
And payable?
Payable is four million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five, and forty-seven cents. So four comma, three, four, four, five, three, five, and forty-seven cents. I also had expected to have the two salaries for the two teachers, but I'm afraid that I don't.
Should they be, should they be taken from?
No, they shouldn't. I mean, the salary comes from the contract. It's not like, it's not like you're approving salary, it's just information. Yeah, to not put them on contract means they start as substitutes.
Right. Okay.
One is actually a leave of absence anyway, so.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, wait, and the other one's a resignation, so it doesn't really matter. Yeah.
I just have a sort of specific essay, specific question. The art teacher leave of absence is a point two. She's a point four at that school, so she's leaving one day?
So, so the music teacher is picking up that point two.
Oh, okay.
And we had a point five opening at Smith.
At his tour turn?
Yeah, and so the mus, so Christie, Christie Sharp is going to Smith for that full point five and still doing it, continuing the day in essay, because the Smith position right now is intended to be one year, and there's continuity that way, and the music teacher will pick up, Ed will get her provisional license and pick up the extra art day.
With the expectation that she comes back from Smith.
That she would go back, if.
And then everybody else.
Yeah, or could happen the other way, so.
Still, is there, now, is there a motion for it? Are you moving consent?
Yes.
Okay, we're back. Is there a motion for the consent agenda, is there a second? Linda? Does anyone want, are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? If not, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's been approved. At this point, I would like to give the committee report from Planning Committee, which met last Tuesday, which would have been August 6th. We had two primary items of business, one of which was to plan this agenda, and the second of which was to work on planning up through approximately the end of September, the public outreach as part of the, excuse me, updated budget process for fiscal 2015. And just a brief review, which was coming out of some of the events from the past year, and wanting to be able to get more public input earlier for various reasons. We have, we had adopted, and we've come through first readings, but we did adopt a plan for gathering information and building a budget for fiscal 15 that looks a bit different than what we 've done in the past. The board has been presented with a bunch of budget process documents last month, which we debated. And, you know, a quick reminder, the big change is getting out at the programmatic level, not to set items that we're going to add, subtract, multiply, whatever, but really just getting input from the boarders on where they feel overall the budget should be, as well as program goals that voters, and not just voters, but administration as well, would like to see. And also having our committees build their priority list and bring it to the, to build a, you know, kind of an initial draft of financial goals that would be coming out of, I mean, I think that the, while the plan of rolling it out was charged to the Planning Committee, Finance Committee also has a role, and we were looking that basically by the end of September, the Finance Committee and/or the Planning Committee, which would meet on October 1st, would be drafting the financial goals, and there would be a presentation at the October 8th board meeting. All of this is a process that had not occurred in prior years. During the fall, typically, the administration had worked within the district to help build the priorities of the district, and then those priorities got presented in November, and we had hearings December, there would be a preliminary budget presented, and then hearings December, January. And I think especially in the last budget process, we felt that there were some items where the public missed, whether we didn't get the information out, or for whatever reason, we just felt we needed to be, put things more upfront. That's just a quick reminder. At the Planning Committee meeting, we basically discussed, we'd be building up a financial input tool. We had seen a draft of that from David in a spreadsheet form. Right now, it's currently being created an online version, that we will be able to have some printed versions that can be able to carry to, to meetings. We had said at the meeting that it was going to be primarily as a target to get that setup.
Yep.
Do you know, are we still on target for that?
We're still on target, yeah.
So there's basically, there's going to be that available, that, the online version. Also, which wanted to get out to the entire board, a toolbox, basically a toolbox of certain things like front porch forums style posting, longer article that we probably built off the one that Meredith already put into North Avenue News. And something that we did put together, Jeannie primarily put it together, and I did a few additions, which was to create a sheet of all the events going on, and we would like to have, that we'd like to do outreach on, if at all possible. And there will be basically signed sheets for people to take a look at that. Now, I only brought one copy tonight, I didn't, we'll get it out to members, but I'm going to pass this around, just to kind of see the number of items that are out there. There are a couple things that are missing still from this particular one that I'm handing around. The one thing I'm missing are the committee meetings. I would hope each committee meeting will spend a bit of time trying to see if they can get some public input. Once again, you know, music can affect the format.
Put this on a Google Doc and have committee meetings.
Yes, and we will get it out in a kind of a pack, and I think also, if we're having a, you know, website, I think that things like this, but for a schedule, it'd be really neat to see. Other things that, like I said, that have already happened, the North Avenue News article, Meredith did put one forward. Keith hosted a Commissioner's Corner in the first week of August, in which this was also discussed, and I would say that if you could, go back and take a look. I think David put together a PowerPoint that he presented there, as well as a Finance Committee, to discuss the process. We'll also be, you know, trying to get with PTOs, try to have all front porch forums covered, and then you can see there's a number of NPAs, but even more importantly, a good number of school-based events at which there will be parents and community at. But we would like to get board members at least to be, you know, have a presence, have the potential to talk to people a bit about the process, in which the talking points would be, you will have in hand, so that we can be getting the better input earlier. And then the, the input will be collated by, just collated by the staff, and then David will come back, both to, I think Finance and Planning, although Finance and Planning is specifically tasked with bringing the report to the board on October 8th. It will be important for Finance to have a view on that, so that at the next, at the October board meeting, the input on programmatic goals, absolute spending rules, will be able to be viewed by what we've been able to get from the community. Additionally, we'd like to have a small review on how well we did get it out. So I don't know if there was any other, there weren't, we didn't have improvements yet, so they were not, they're not up on the website for you to take a look at, so I don't know if there are any other questions that really came out of plan that anyone might have, or about the process. Okay, that being done, I guess, Keith, I would ask, did you want to add anything on Finance Committee? I think you were here for public comment, but a couple people did ask about getting input back from the superintendent on athletic and cultural leaders, and I know that there was some information there at Finance. I think that might be the one piece of public comment that affects your board that you might have.
The Finance Committee meeting, we, we heard about the impact of sequestration. If you remember, when we put our fiscal 14 budget together, we recognized that there would be some impact in the district, and we reduced our title funds by 3%, our expectation that we would get a 3% loss in our title fund, while it turned out to be 10%, a 10% loss, and, or a total of $368,000. The superintendent administration's gone to have made adjustments in our programs, and reduced some programs, but they're still trying to find funding for $57,000. And that sort of is a segue into co-curricular and athletic budget, because everything is still in flux, and we're still trying to find money how to, what programs, and what we have to look at for fulfilling these title funds, which are mandated requirements. I mean, that of $57,000, we still haven't let a report on the co-curricular and athletic budget cut, but we anticipate that will be at our August 27th Finance Meeting, but they'll make, make some decisions about what they'll need to do in order to be able to continue the athletic and co-curricular programs at the same level that we have this year, or we had last year. That's, is that what you were looking for?
Yes.
Are there any questions? I guess I covered everything I said.
Okay. Linda, policy?
The Policy Committee had quite an interesting meeting, and one of the things we've been talking about was overwhelming task of looking at our policies, updating them, and so on. And so we got in touch with the School Board, the Mont School Board Association, and she backed Galway Mayor. got back, Galton Mayor, Nicole, forgot my last name, got back to me today. And they are going to propose, they can come in and take a look at what we have for policies and make a, just a rough draft idea of where we're coming from and come and present it to us at a meeting and that will cost us $600. Or they could also come in and help us really redraft our, our policies at an undetermined amount of money at this point, so I'm waiting to hear back from them on what that would be involved in that. But I, we have as a group taken a look at the state recommended policies from the Vermont School Boards Association and they are very short and very clear, they're a couple of sentences long and then a lot of the meat goes into the procedures, which is differentiated from the policy. And I guess I'm taking the idea that I'd like to have the board take a look at, we'll come back to you next month when we really know what the state association can offer us, with the idea of having them come in, give us a, our presentation and take a look at possibly just redoing the, just starting over on some of these policies, because some of them have been around for a long time and they haven't been updated. So that's one discussion. And following through on that was Patrick's concern over again and mine too, that we do a lot more on the advocacy end of things. If, if we could do something about the policy, we could then have more time to do something with advocacy. And we are following through on that, doing some work on trying to see exactly come this fall where we want to go, requesting that in the process of these, people going around and getting input on the budget and talking about where we want to spend money, if people would include the question, what makes the Burlington School District unique? And we'll use that, the information we get from that to develop a brand, kind of a marketing proposal for the school district. The only other thing is that at this point, we have, we've put a hold on the civility proposal, civility call, policy and requested that Jeannie meet with the already elected leaders within the various employee associations, talk about the climate survey that happened last year and look for input from them, from, from various employee groups on how we can include the climate in the school and that would be improving the civility. We felt that that was a more respectful way to start doing this. We may end up at some point with a policy, but at this point, we'd like to try this first. And that's it.
Okay. I did see that you had.
No, did I forget something?
Second reading.
Oh, on a, yeah, and I don't know what to do with that in the sense that if we could do that, but then are we, I suppose we should just go ahead and do that and then move ahead next month on redoing the policies?
Well, one thing that I always try to check on this is, I don't in fact think we could do a second reading of this policy tonight.
Because we didn't do a first reading?
We did a first, we did a first reading, but you need 30 days.
Okay.
And we are short on the 30 days as I look at our last meeting to this meeting, so we would have to put that off to September anyway.
So that's it?
Okay. Bernie?
Any questions?
Oh, sorry, yes. Bernie? Is it infrastructure?
Thank you. Yeah, we got, we talked a little bit about budgeting goals and actually came up with more questions than we actually set goals, but I think the questions will help us set some, set some direction out for our next meeting. We did look at one of the board goals that involves facilities, like it was number seven originally, but it's, I think, eliminating two of them, we're back to five. And so we basically rewrote that goal and the original goal was develop a five-year plan for facilities that will accommodate student enrollment, enhance learning environments and improve energy efficiency. And we changed that to read, to accommodate student enrollment, enhance learning environments, assure accessibility in all buildings and improve energy efficiency. So it was just a little bit of wordsmithing on that one. Just a quick overview of some of the capital projects review, but we didn't get too far because Joel and Mark are deeply involved in getting the schools open, so that will be carried over to our September meeting. Flint construction is going fine or within budget, there was a couple of surprises, one was an item in the kitchen, the grease trap had to be rebuilt or replaced. And there was some issue with all the rains, there was some water coming back into the building, it didn't cause any damage, but it was a sort of a heads up on that. And they're building a new accessible playground and I have in minutes that it starts mid-September, but I believe it starts mid-August and that most parents are going to get involved in that construction. We briefly talked about the St. Joseph's timeline permitting and getting drawings done and all that will need to be done for that step, but that's, that schedule was to be determined depending on our negotiations. And that was it. Next month, we're going to have, I think Amy Mellon Camp is going to come in to talk about the activity this summer around the renovations of the high school and, and also, we're also going to discuss some of the accessibility needs that actually directly related that at in the high school. That's it.
Any questions, Constance? I just had two things that I thought about while you were talking. To see the good report that really is being used by the Infrastructure and Technology Committee on capital projects, if you look under the July 2 finance committee minutes is where the good copy of that is right now. And the second thing in discussing the St. Joseph's timeline, I think, one of the things I remember that was, I know there's a certain amount of work that flexibility with UVM as well, that, you know, if, we are getting too late really to have a timeline that we had looked at.
Yep.
And I think the university understands that and they have said they would work with us on not kicking us out of buildings.
Yep, it's just moving.
You know, just moving everything forward, right? Because that was a concern we expressed to the UVM, as far as we've been trying to work through some of these other issues and they were, they were very open to say, oh, that, just no problem, we'll just, if you need to take that time, you take that time, let's get this, everything else right first.
There's really needed here.
Yeah.
Realistically to, to do everything and get it done, so.
Patrick, you had, you guys, you had no meeting, anything you want to report on?
Before, before more reading.
The other thing I'd say is that, you know, our next meeting will be taking up the issue of discussing about the calendar. We will have the Brown University ELL report that we're going to be discussing, we'll be talking about graduation expectations and then, I think, I don't know if I'm saying most importantly, but I think that another very important thing will be a discussion about some changes in the way that special education is being considered at the district, which will have both impacts on budget, but more essentially, I think, impacts on the way that kids learn and receive services and if anyone's interested, it should be, it has the potential to be a major change from the positive in the district.
Okay, that's a full meeting.
It's a very full meeting.
Any questions or comments from Patrick? Diversity inequity committee?
I'm recording out, it's not a reading I attended, but Liz is not here, so I'm recording out of a blur. The minutes reflect most of it, the civility policy has been moved from diversity inequity to policy, just to update some policy about that being a sort of reworking of how it's written and who is writing it, which diversity inequity certainly agreed with the philosophy of that. And then in the agenda tonight, you have the draft, or not the draft, but the new sort of charge for the diversity and equity inclusion advisory council for approval. The language is fairly similar to what it was before, there's no dramatic changes in it, slight modifications to, you know, it's not only talking about the report card, it's also talking about other data points and other tools to measure progress and clarifying whose council it is and that it's, that it's reporting to the board, but that it's really working with the administration on that work. Sorry.
The advisory council will report to the administration and the administration will report to the board.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to know how, was how I heard you say something.
Okay.
Is this something that needs board action?
Yes, it needs a vote, I believe.
Yes.
The board is adopting this charge.
So you've just made a.
We maybe would like to, a motion to approve that recommendation.
Would, you can move it.
You can move it.
I can move it.
Yes.
Are you making?
It's on your agenda.
Yeah, I'm reading it, but you're, you're going to accept the whole thing?
To accept the new charge, which is what is attached on the agenda. The language of what the advisory council is, is what I'm looking.
And second from Kathy? So the motion is to approve the charge as contained in our minutes. Is there any further discussion on this? Did you want to speak anymore to this, Rebecca, or?
I probably spoke more.
Okay.
But there are questions.
Linda?
Yeah, I have one question, when you get in the top part where it says, the predictors, I thought originally there was something way back and I can't, I can't find it right now, that would relate not to household or family living situation or something to that, that, because that's another.
I do remember that conversation.
And it's disappeared, it's invisible again, what can I say?
It's terrible that it's invisible.
Yeah, but, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I think that the change was made based on the way it was written, the original charge.
That's correct and Paul, I'm not sure if you're able to help us remember if we were able to come up with an indicator that had to do with kinship children, because we don't, because our data, our concern is our data sets us up there. Do you recall if we ended up with a term? Dan, I think, had a term, I don't know if we.
Yeah, we, we had this discussion of the policy and I think there is, I remember you saying we can find it in our data.
We can find it if it's reported, right?
It, it has to do with.
She'd like to amend the charge to add.
No, my question is, what, what question do we ask the students, the kids, is that data?
Who are the kids, on the intake stuff, we're asking, who do they live with?
You have to sign off if you're a parent or guardian.
So that's, that's, that's where we get the data?
Yeah, if you're, if they're a parent or if they're a guardian.
Okay.
Okay, okay, yeah. And that gives us another indicator for home living situation. But it's also, the other part of it is it then makes, raises our awareness, we should be making sure that they're getting free lunch and all kinds of other services.
Linda, I'm going to put some words in your mouth, I would say that you're proposing to amend this charge to include an indicator based on, I guess, guardianship.
Family living situation, I think it's a probably a nice way to put it.
And so that's, you'd be proposing that as amendment?
Yeah.
Is there a second for that? Keith? So, just to remind everybody, we basically, it's just an amendment to add, as an indicator, you said family.
Yeah, and I, I can, you can change that.
Yeah, that's fine.
The intent is to capture the kids who are living out of home and not in the CAF placement, but getting with relatives or whatever.
Okay, I, I think that's actually fairly straightforward, it would be to, you know, that first sentence, significantly reduce rate of subtenacity, household income ability, gender, family living situation and gender orientation, as Rebecca's backing up her performance. Is there any discussion on this amendment?
Yeah, I don't know, this isn't, I don't think this, oh, I'm sorry, no, I was gonna say that, no.
On the amendment, I'm sorry. Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so right now, the motion that is on the floor for the initial approval as amendment, and then Patrick?
Yeah, I, I know that some of this is, is addressed in the inclusion report, but not all of these are and I just, I'm wondering, first of all, for a, a, a couple of these identifiers in the tool, how we have information on them? Gender orientation, is that something, is that something that we?
We don't ask.
We don't ask, we don't collect, so I don't know if it makes sense to include that on there.
Discipline, it, it comes out through the discipline reports if it's harassment.
Yeah, but it's not as terms of a percentage, or something, there's nothing.
Not academic achievement.
It would also have to be something that would be voluntarily reported out by someone, so, so I think from a, from a statistical point of view, that, that's a, that's a problematic one to conclude. I think that the, the idea is, is fine, but, but in order to, to, in the language of this, to reduce, you know, that as a predictor, well, we don't even know what it is, which gets me to a couple of these other ones that I think we need to make sure we have a very clear baseline set of data for what all of these are as predictors. Now, some of them, like I started this rambling talk, are included in the inclusion report card, but I don't know that gender is used as a predictor for academic performance, discipline, co-curricular, and something like gender is even more complicated in that, well, are we talking about academic performance in math, are we talking about academic performance in writing, you know? So, so how, I, I think we need to be really careful when we, the spirit of this is great, the putting it into action is going to be a little bit more complicated. The same for ability, I think, is, is going to have a few complications on there, is that ability takes a huge swath of, of.
It's really intended to be identified in special education or not identified as receiving special education services. It, it kind of mirrors the same subgroups that NECAP mirrors with race ethnicity, free and reduced speech, IUP status.
But, so right now is, is, okay, so going back to the line of gender, all right, so right now, is gender a predict, if we're, if we're, if the goal is to significantly reduce gender as a predictor of academic performance?
We try to.
Is it a predictor of academic performance right now? And if it's not a predictor of academic performance, how can we reduce it as a predictor of academic performance?
Well, I think, if you look at the report that came out last year, or the two reports, the draft and the first annual, gender is in there and you can see, you know, so you're looking at, in honors classes, for example, do we have the same number of boys as we do girls in honors math and if not, why not? And it raises the questions of, are we doing all that we can do to meet every student's potential? So in that sense, yes. Is it a predictor? That's a research question that we don't answer in our report, we're just really looking at our data.
Right, and I'm, and I'm focusing back then on what the, the, the charge is then for this group, the charge is to do it this, as a statistical research question as, as I'm reading this and is it something that we can, is it practical, are we just making something?
Gender is, gender orientation is not. I mean, gender is doable.
Okay. In, okay, I mean, I think, I think there are a lot of, I think there are a lot of harsh research questions. I mean, I think there are a lot of, I think there are a lot of harsh research questions that are in this, that demand the practicality. Practicality are going to be really, really tough to, you know, to come up with. Totally in favor of the spirit of it. But is it a problem if certain kids from a certain household income are really looking for co-curricular participation? Is it just rough numbers? Is it, does it matter if everyone from a certain household income is playing, doing skiing and everyone from a certain, does that happen? As we use a finer tooth comb, we're really trying to get something out of this other than saying, gosh, we really believe this. But if we're really using this as an instrument to improve what we're doing, I, you know, I'm going to vote for it. I think this is fine. But I also challenge us then to really do some careful statistical work with this and make this something that really informs how we're going to be moving forward rather than say, you know, oh, look, we don't have too much of a difference between the number of boys and girls who are doing, who are taking honors math classes. Okay, that's, I went on to you.
You can turn the committee, because it says one or more board members. One of whom will be?
I turned this down to plenty of committees, I think, so. But I, yeah, I.
And this will be taken over by the new director, once hired, as well. So I'll have to have that conversation with you as well.
Okay. Rebecca and then Keith. Keith?
I know that, that there's a certain group of students who are being worked with, maybe came out of this, the last year's report. So I think that's, that kind of, I'm assuming that's where that started. I'm assuming that this report, when you look at, like, PLC, the teachers look at their assessment score. Is it worthwhile having gender orientation in there if we don't ask about it? Or is it, is it real?
I don't know if Paul wants to add to that. I think where gender orientation really becomes real in this report, again, it's just simply around discipline reports. We do not ask students their gender orientation. Nor do I personally think it's appropriate to. So therefore, it doesn't, it's not really a predictor of academic performance or co-curricular participation.
So should we take it out of this charge?
Well, discipline is one of the categories that we're trying to eliminate of.
Right. And there, we only know if gender orientation is used in a harassment situation. And it is honestly our highest concern of harassing, it is.
Okay, then we need to report that, okay.
So would, I'm wondering about whether sequencing the academic performance discipline as co-curricular participation with and/or would that capture discipline as being one category versus all three categories?
If you want to change it to that, all you'd have to ask is your second for it to be friendly.
Does Keith's answer capture your question?
So it's changing it to predictors of academic performance, comma, co-curricular participation, comma, and/or discipline?
Right, right.
I had two thoughts from what I've heard. One, which around to this point, I think that if we find that there are some things we just are not able to capture information or something we should be aware of, maybe we need to change again. Second thing, I think to Patrick's point is, I think that's something as we came out of the first set of data, we, I think what I felt like we did do was identify certain places. And it was, we knew where they were. But now we can point to and say, these are places we have a special need that we really need to reduce them as predictors over time. And I think that we should be, you know, we will be focusing on those. I think that, I think it is, I'm not sure that we're going to be, you know, I think there would be a certain priority in this because certain predictors are greater right now than others. It's the way I took it from coming out of it. And I think we will be looking at the places where they are the strongest predictors. Any other questions or comments about this?
Just quick, is this just volunteer, like whoever, so an individual under membership? Like for an individual possesses knowledge and expertise in the area of research? Is this just someone, anybody can sort of jump on the board? Or is this someone who's going to apply or?
Well, I mean, that's the criteria ultimately. It's working with the administration. And so, you know, I don't think it's a resume that builds what their skill and expertise is, but I think it would be fairly clear to get a sense of whether someone is a data analysis person, either professionally or?
So can I just make a suggestion that, like, we go up to UVM and talk to faculty member at UVM who's a statistic person particularly?
We have people already interested in me. I mean, it's like, you know, very college last year, so, yeah.
Yeah, that really knows Ed's stats.
Yeah, no, the statistics piece in particular has people lining up. Rather than just, oh, I.
There's a doctoral student out there somewhere that would love
Exactly.
access to this data set to put something together.
Yeah. I'll start my attention.
Any other comment, questions? If not, all in favor of adopting this revised background for the inclusion advisory council? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry, one quick comment. I forgot to say Xander and Henry were going to be sworn in at this meeting, but Xander sort of at the last minute was unable to make it. So we were all, sorry, until September. Do your votes.
It's kind of a, like, anyway. It's kind of a boring meeting to, you know, I mean, you want to be sworn in like when it's exciting.
You have a lot of people here.
A lot of people.
I would, just before we consider an executive session, I would like to make one comment that Linda reminded me of related to this, which is, there are a couple, you know, board members are doing some individual outreach meetings. Linda does at a time every Wednesday morning at the Bale, which is a good time to, you know, come out and see other constituents. Miriam has been doing some things as well. And I think if other members were to set things up, that would be other great opportunities to do this. I will get around to other people and talk more about this list. We'll probably post a Google Docs document to try to get everything covered on that. At this point, on the agenda is an executive session. And I would entertain a motion, and I guess it should be entered exactly as read on the agenda. Keith? Keith moves that we consider an executive session to discuss a personnel matter, a real estate matter, and to negotiations where premature disclosure could place the school district at a substantial disadvantage. Is there a second? Bernie? All in favor of entering executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I assume.